Good evening, this is the 7 o'clock session for the Board of School Directors for Boyer Town Area School District. I would like to ask all participants to mute their audio. Those who are part of the public, as in the previous meetings, the Board President will identify the times that you will be able to speak, as with our normal board structure. Other than that, all of the times are reserved for Board of School Directors or staff to respond to their questions. If you have not used Zoom before, if you click on the icon that has two people side by side, either at the bottom or top of your menu, depending on where you've placed it, you can see the list of all the participants. You can raise your hand as a participant to be called upon when the President identifies the areas for the public to speak, at which time he will identify the people in a particular order to speak, and the same rules will apply, which he will go over about 30 minutes, three minutes per person for the public speaking session. Also, you should see a note. If you don't, there is a notice on it indicating that this is being recorded, and so everything that is said and done here is actually being recorded for the record, just as we record our normal board meetings. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Foose.
All right, lucky me. So we're going to start with a roll call. So we'll do a roll call to make sure we have everybody in attendance.
Right. Mr. Hemingway. Ms. Duroff.
Here.
Ms. Hogan.
Is that it here?
President.
Mrs. Denon.
Here.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mrs. McWhorter.
Here.
Mr. Uptegrove.
Mr. Uptegrove, I can see you, I think. You are muted. Thank you. Mr. Foose.
I'm here. All right, so did I hear correctly? Do we have everybody in attendance?
That's correct.
Nice. All right, we will move next to Pledge Allegiance and Moment of Silence. So if you have a flag, please join us in the Pledge Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. All right. So the first item that we have tonight is regarding teleconferencing and virtual meetings. So for those joining us online who may not be able to read the print, or those who might be calling in, I will read this to you. As a result of the current state of emergency associated with COVID-19, it is recommended that by majority vote, effective March 24, 2020, the Board of School Directors suspend until the end of the COVID-19 emergency the following provisions of Policy 006.1. Those are provisions 1 and 2, that no individual board member can use these procedures more than six times per school year from July 1 until June 30. Not more than two board members can use these procedures at any meeting. If more than two board members request to use teleconferencing, the first two board members who make the request will be permitted to do so, of four board members and all others in attendance at the meeting of the identity of the absent, non-participating board members, if known. The presiding officer shall then request the roll call. The participating board member, upon responding affirmatively to the call, shall be considered present for the meeting. Dr. Ben, would you like me to read this public comment portion here?
First of all, you must take a vote, Mr. President, to act upon this, to suspend those portions you referred to in Policy 006.1.
So do we need a motion?
Yes.
We do, so I'm going to go to the participants' pane. You can audibly do a motion or raise your hand in the participants' pane.
I make a motion.
Mr. Hemingway. All right, so I heard Ms. McWhorter, and I had also seen Mr. Hemingway, so I'll have Mr. Hemingway first, so I'll have Mr. Hemingway be an initial motion with a second from Ms. McWhorter. And so we'll move. Does anybody have any comments or questions on this topic?
Members of the public who are joining in would have an opportunity to comment at this time on this, because they wouldn't have had an opportunity to comment on it by virtue of this being placed first on the agenda.
So that being, that was our solicitor, Mr. Saltanic.
Yes.
So if any, if anybody on the line would like to raise their hand and make any comments, we'll do that at this time. This being public members first, and then we'll move to board members.
Mr. President, I expanded my screen, and I see no hands raised.
Yes, I'm seeing the same. Okay, so we'll move to board member comments. Does anybody have any comment on this particular agenda item?
I do.
It sounded like Ms. Nyman. Ms. Nyman, would you like to go ahead and speak?
Yeah, what happens if we have to use this more than six times?
That's why the rule is being suspended. That portion is what's being suspended.
Yeah, the suspension is to allow us to override those for the time being, given the emergency situation.
That's not the way I was reading it, but okay.
Does anybody have any other comments or questions for clarification? All right, seeing none at this time, we'll move to a roll call vote.
And just a reminder, please remember to unmute yourself when you are registering your vote. Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I could not hear you. That's okay. Ms. Hogan?
Sorry.
That's okay.
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes.
Mr. Uptegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion passes 9-0.
All right, next we will move to announcement of previous executive session. The Board of School Directors met on the following dates in executive session to discuss items in the following areas. One of the February 25, 2020, meeting was for 10 minutes, and that was informational. And the March 24, meeting earlier today, March 24, 2020, was for 60 minutes, and that was pertaining to legal. The next item on the agenda is public comment period. This is public comment period number So are we, was there a specific sign up, or are we soliciting participation at this time?
You would have to solicit participation with the raise of the hand or request, Mr. President, to remind them that it's for items that are, if I remember, this is the one on the agenda?
Public comment period one, yes.
Yes, and the three-minute limit?
Just going to give folks a minute to unmute or raise their hand if anybody is trying to do that. All right, at this time, I have not seen any hands raised, so we will move ahead to the approval of minutes. So there are three different minutes that need to be approved. Each one will be a vote, a roll call vote, independent of the others. So the first is for the approval of the minutes for February 25, 2020.
I'll move.
All right, Denon moves.
I'll second.
And McWhorter, seconds. Go ahead and roll call for ten minutes, unless anybody, does anybody have any objections or clarifications needed on these minutes? All right, seeing and hearing none, we'll move to the vote.
Okay. Mr. Hemingway? Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman? Okay. Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes.
Mr. Uptegrove?
Mr. Uptegrove, I did not hear your vote.
Yes, it did not go off.
Okay. Mr. Foose? Motion passes eight with one extension.
Now we have minutes from March 3, 2020. Would anybody like to move to vote on these minutes?
I'll move.
All right, Ms. Hogan?
I'll second.
We need a second. Second, Ms. Denon. Does anybody have any comments, questions, or clarifications for the March 3 minutes? All right, seeing and hearing none, we'll move to a vote.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Ms. Nyman, I'm sorry, I did not hear your response.
I said I abstained again.
Thank you. Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes.
Mr. Uptegrove?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero with one extension.
All right, and we have one other set of minutes from March 10, 2020. Do we have a motion?
Emotion.
Were there motions?
Second.
Second from Ms. Hogan. Does anybody have any comments, questions, or clarifications on the March 10 minutes? All right, again, I'm not seeing any, not hearing any. We'll move to the vote.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yeah.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Knutman?
I'm abstaining again.
Thank you. Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes.
Mr. Uptegrove? Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero with one extension.
All right, now we will move to report of the President. I don't have anything for this evening, so we'll move ahead to the Treasurer's Report. This is the Treasurer's Report from February of 2020.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, I'm muted.
Okay. I would like to cover a few highlight items for the February Treasurer's Report. The local revenue for February is approximately $500,000, which consists of approximately $273,000 from delinquent real estate taxes, tax collections, as well as the transfer tax. Approximately $125,000 was from earned income taxes. The, in regards to state revenue for February, is approximately $2.6 million, which consists of approximately $2.2 million from the Pennsylvania Department of Education, Basic Education. In reference to the federal revenues for February is approximately $47,000, which consists of approximately $30,000 from Title IIa and $11,000 from Title IV. And following up with the expenditures for February is approximately $9.1 million. Salary and benefits accounts for approximately 71% of expenditures at $6.5 million. That will conclude the highlights for the February Treasurer's Report.
All right, are there any comments or questions on the Treasurer's Report? We're sorry, there's a, the recommended action is for us to approve as presented. Sorry, is there a motion for the Treasurer's Report?
Denon moves.
I second.
Ms. Denon, was that Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Seconded. All right, so at this time, any comments or questions on the Treasurer's Report? I'm not hearing any. I don't see any hands raised in the participation pane, so we will move to a vote.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff? Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Anything on the, because I was locked out of my computer all weekend? No.
All right, Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes.
Mr. Uptegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion passes seven two.
The next item on today's agenda is the Secretary's Report.
No report.
Okay, so that will move to the Superintendent's Report and the consent agenda.
Mr. President, item number nine A is ratification of the postponement of the BASH Social Studies overnight trip, which was an international trip. We did submit that letter to the company in time to allow the students to select the options that best suited them, that was presented to the board, to salvage what they could from the trip having to be postponed. Item number nine B is overnight trip, which is the Board's practice to approve and ratify all overnight trips. The Board of School Directors are asking to approve the following overnight trip for the purpose of 300-plus BASH class of 2021 students to travel to Orlando, Florida, March 9, 9 through 13, 2021, given the current state of affairs. Some may be wondering why this is on here, but these trips typically need a year in advance approval for the process. So if someone's concerned why it's here, given the current circumstances. We're also asking the Board, the School Directors, to approve Policies 220, the Student Expression and Distribution, and the Posting of Materials, and Policy 913, Non-School Organizations, Groups, and Individuals, effective March 24, 2020. That was previously presented to the Board as part of committee session. Item nine D is that the Board of School Directors approve Kevin Alvisser as a new census enumerator for the Douglas Township, Berks County. This was a revision. Item nine E is the 2021 Berks Current Technical Center budget that was presented as part of the committee meeting. I believe, Mr. President, Mrs. Duroff may have requested item nine F be removed to itemize agenda. Is that correct, Ms. Duroff?
Yeah.
So I will skip item nine F, Mr. President, that needs to be moved, and I will try to move it as soon as I get a chance. At this point in time, we ask the Board to approve as part of consent agendas, item nine A through E as part of the consent agenda.
All right, so as this is consent, we'll look for a motion and a second, and then move to vote.
Hogan, motions.
Hogan, motions. Do we have a second?
With water.
All right, I heard two folks, and since Mr. Uptegrove, I believe, was trying to get in there, I'm going to give it to him. Mr. Uptegrove, you got the second?
Thank you.
We'll move to a vote.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
I'm sorry, was that a yes? Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
I am going to abstain because I have not had a chance to look at it, since I have not had access to my iPad.
Okay. McWhorter?
Yes.
Mr. Uptegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero with one extension.
All right, the next, sorry, Dr. Ben, will we be moving that item to the itemized agenda then?
It's already been moved. I just refreshed. The ladies moved it already.
Okay, so next up is the Solicitor's Report.
I am no report.
Followed by the Superintendent's Report.
You've got a lot of communication. That's all the reports I have, which you received in writing previously.
Yes, there has been a lot of communication coming out of the district. We appreciate all that hard work, given these circumstances. So next is the itemized agenda.
Items 12A is auditing services quote that was presented to the Board Committee. This presented in the February Finance and Sales and Operations Committee is agreement with the district's current audit firm, which was set to expire. We are requesting that the Board of School Directors approve the attached agreement for auditing services for the 2020 to 2020 to 2021 fiscal year, which will end on June 30, 2021, at a cost of $22,675, and for 20, excuse me, for 1920 to 2020, auditing services is $27,175. And the total estimated for the 2021 auditing services would be $30,275, consisting of $22,675 for the district auditing services and $1,900 for each of the four tax collectors. is the $30,375, requesting Board approval to enter into the agreement for auditing services as presented to Barbara Kane Thornton and Company, LLP, of Wilmington, Delaware.
All right, and then there's that attachment, if anybody needs to go in and review that. Is there anything specific you want to mention about that before we look for a motion?
No, just, it's attached for public view, for anyone who's logged in, but we're just showing it. It's a document that's available for the public to review on their own. It's the same document that was at the committee meeting.
Yep, and this is available, as you said, in the public contact section as an attachment. So is there a motion for this item?
Hogan motions.
Hogan?
Denon second.
My second from Ms. Denon. All right, any comments or questions on this?
Yeah, Ms. Duroff with a hand up, Mr. President?
Yep, I see that. Ms. Duroff?
The reason, because after I read this, I'm and sure if I'm correct or not, but the reason I give figures on this, it says that there was an hour week, and these are all, and sure, I give figures, also says in the contract that
Ms. Duroff, your phone is breaking up. I don't know if you can put your mouth closer to the mouthpiece. We can barely hear you.
Okay. Depends on who's, as far as, is that better?
Yes, that's better now, yes.
Okay, I had it the, it says, hello? Okay, I had it that you just gave was were approximate. And all this said it depends who did the audit. What the last contract said, if all that was in the last contract, because I'm a little on agree to some, is it Mike? So
I don't know if other people could hear the question. I was unable to.
The one question, the only thing I could pick up was she had a concern about there being an estimate of the cost, so that's one thing I could pick up.
Are you going?
So you might want to answer why there, the So you might want to answer why the cost is an estimate?
And I will say I did not question that. So I would probably have to go back to Barbara Kane and get an answer on that.
It also says it depends who does the audit. As far as filling the hourly rate. Did our other contracts say that?
I would have to look at the previous contract, and I am sorry, I am not to that question.
Okay, that's all right.
I do know that Ms. Deroff, that without having it in front of me, just like a law firm, audit firms have different members that have differently hourly rates, so I'm
Correct, that's what I'm saying. They said it depends who does it. So that's why I asked for the bill up for those price person.
Carol, I guess the question, is there a deadline for this?
No, I would say if we need to get some additional information, I certainly would do that. We do want to, this was something I just want to make sure that we weren't waiting till the last minute on. So I certainly could go back and get answers to those questions, and we could, I don't know if we want to table it for now and bring it back.
I'd like to know what the last contract said, if it is that vague also.
And I would have to look that up. I don't know.
Okay, so is there, there's some questions on this particular item? Is there anybody else who's looking to table this? Or there hasn't been a formal motion to table yet?
I can move to table.
I'll second that.
Is there a second? Second by Ms. Hogan. So then I believe we need to discuss that motion. Is that correct, Mr. Sultanic?
That's correct. That is the motion that's on the table right now, whether we table the motion or not. Typically, there's no discussion.
Just go to a vote to table?
That's what, as I heard, was a motion to table in a second, no discussion. A yes vote means that the action would be tabled. The no vote means that the underlying motion will be left for board vote.
So we'll move forward with a vote on the motion to table this item while additional information is gathered.
So we should need to do a roll call.
Yep, Mr. Hemingway? Mr. Hemingway, I'm sorry, I did not hear your vote?
No.
Ms. Deroff? Ms. Deroff, I'm sorry, I did not hear your vote?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
No.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. McWharter?
Yes.
Mr. Up to Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion to table passes seven two.
Item number 12. Mr. President, were you going to say something?
No, sorry, go on.
Item number 12B is approval of the first American computer lease. This lease allows for us to move forward as discussed in the previous earlier meeting, committee meeting, with the purchase of the Chromebooks for our student use.
All right, and this was just discussed at our committee meeting. Does any, I guess we need a motion in order to begin discussion on this. Motion in a second.
McWharter motions.
Do we have a second? Right, second from the Denon. Any comments or questions on this item? I see two hands raised. Looks like Ms. Deroff, and then in the queue we'll have, I believe that's Mr. Brophy.
I was trying to second.
Oh, sorry, okay. All right, Ms. Deroff, did you have any comments or questions on this? I just saw your hand raised in the participation pane. All right, looks like that's gone. All right, so if no one else has any comments or questions?
Mr. President, can you hold on?
Yes.
We couldn't hear. I think she's trying to say something now. I unmuted her.
Okay, all right, yes, Ms. Deroff.
I said, I know we discussed this before, however, we did a lot of things before. I would like to since I don't believe we're going to be coming back to school in the computer's office for a couple months, and I was wondering if we can extend that for a year.
I can answer.
I believe the question, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I believe she's asking if we can extend the computer lease a year because of the certain circumstances?
Yeah, I think that's the question.
Well, I mean, these leases, this lease is for the July 1st timeframe, so this allows us to get the new computers for the upcoming August, end of August timeframe for incoming freshmen and incoming sixth graders, along with replacing end of life or end of lease returns that we had to return back to HP. So I don't see a viable option to extend that another year.
Even with the, well, I can't see how much the other ones are. They took even with the expensive ones that we're not going to be using now.
Well, the one, now, our current lease situation is a fair market lease, which means at the end of the lease, we have the option to buy those computers or return them back to HP, and usually the value is about $160 per device. So the Chromebooks, brand new, are around $200. So it's, you know, and normally when we return these machines, value from all the damage that we have, if they're not in perfect, brand-new condition. So historically, it's been a lose-lose proposition for the district for as far as losing money to keep those devices. So we really don't have the option. We had to return them or we had to buy them out, and really, there's no value in them at this point. If we're going to continue with Chromebooks, because the ones that had to go back are Windows devices, and with our new initiative to move forward with Chromebooks, it wouldn't align.
Okay, is this it? Thank you.
I can add on to that, Mrs. Deroff, that the amount of money we're spending this year as compared to last year is substantially less.
All right, are there any other comments or questions on this topic? All right, I'm not seeing any, so we'll move this to roll call vote.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
I'm going to abstain because I have not had a chance to look over any of this without having my iPad in operation.
Mrs. McWharter?
Yes.
Mr. Up to Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero with one abstention.
Item 12D, item 12D is a ratification of compensating employee groups that were not covered.
Dr. Bedden, I think we missed one.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yeah, item 12C is approved the purchase by the district of the computer equipment subject of the proposal in amount of $489,897,060 through CoStar's purchasing contract or a cooperative. Administration.
We're also there are a couple of attachments for administrative content. Anything on the screen here?
Carol or Bob?
I have a hard time reading that.
I'm just asking, do you have anything specific you want to highlight?
The only thing I want to highlight is I want to express that, again, this price, we're, you know, we're taking the incoming sixth grade and eighth grade, sixth and eighth, ninth grade computers, but we're also transitioning existing computers to Chromebooks. So the cost would have been over $1.1 million, but we're substantially less this year with going, with continuing on with the Chromebook initiative.
All right. I believe we're at the point to call for a motion.
I give a motion.
All right, Mr. Up to Grove, motions. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Hogan? Roll call vote, or sorry, any comments or questions on this? Not seeing any right now. Participants pane, so move to roll call.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff? Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon? Sorry, Mrs. Denon, I did not hear you.
Mrs. Denon, your microphone is on, and then you keep turning it off.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman? I'm sorry, Ms. Nyman, I did not hear you.
I am going to abstain again because my iPad has not been in use. I've been locked out.
Mrs. McWharter?
Yes.
Mr. Up to Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero with one abstention.
The item 12D, item 12D is a ratification of the compensating employee groups that were not covered under Pennsylvania Code Section 1153 during emergency school closure from March 13th through March 27th. Additionally, this item also requested ratification, but also for the school board to provide guidance and direction on the continued compensation of medical benefits for the above referenced employees. This item was recently just updated and discussed in executive session via legal counsel. I do believe that there will be potential for scheduling another session with legal counsel regarding some additional information that was shared today about the new legislation. But at this time, we are asking for, the administration recommends the board ratify the compensation with employee groups reference from the March 13th through the 27th 2020 time period. And then further action would be in compliance with whatever the recommendation going forward from a school board attorney based on the board's guidance, once they speak to the attorney again.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Open up.
McWharter seconds.
Second from McWharter. So any comments or questions on this item? Not seeing any. So we will move to a roll call vote.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff? I'm sorry, Ms. Deroff, was that a yes?
Ms. Deroff, that sounded like a yes, is that correct? Yes, she said yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
I am going to abstain because I was not privileged to that executive session tonight because my iPad was not working.
Mrs. McWharter?
Yes.
Mr. Up to Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero with one abstention.
Item number 12E is the administration's recommendation for the elimination of identified Act 93 positions. In the fall of 2018, there's a recommendation, a board approval for the creation of two Act 93 positions in lieu of filling a vacated 12-month assistant principal position who transitioned to the elementary principal in the district. The two Act 93 positions, a 10-month assistant principal and a 10-month Dean of Students, were created to support DeBury Town Area High School administration with increase in student enrollment. To be physically responsible, in June 2019, we recommended the board approve the 10-month AP position and a 10-month Dean position. At this time, we're recommending that those, that 10-month assistant principal position and a 10-month Dean position be eliminated as part of Act 93 employee group.
All right, do we have any, do we have a motion for this?
McWharter moves.
All right.
Denon seconds.
Denon seconds. Do we have any comments or questions on this item? Participants quick, all right, seeing and hearing none, we'll move to a vote.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff? Ms. Deroff? Ms. Dieroff, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Ms. Dieroff, we can't hear you. Can you raise your hand, signal if it's a yes? Right now, Carol, you'd have to mark it as an abstention because we can't verify it. Yes, you raised it. It's a yes. Thank you, Ms. Dieroff.
Thank you. Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Again, I'm going to abstain because I haven't had the use of my iPad.
Mrs. McWherter?
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove?
Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero with one abstention.
Item number 12F, at the, is approval of the supportive supervisory group plan. At the February 25th, 25th, 2020 board meeting, board of school directors approved their reinstatement and reconstitution of supportive supervisory group. The board also received another briefing and update at the committee meeting held tonight. The following positions are part of that group. Three deans of social, emotional, and academic learning, supervisor of student services, school safety coordinator slash school police officer, human resource managers, and communications marketing specialists. At this time, administration recommends approval of the supportive supervisory group plan.
Anybody like to raise a motion?
Okay, motions.
Ms. Hogan, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Hemingway, seconds. Any comments or questions? Right, seeing and hearing none. Move to roll call vote.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff? Ms. Dieroff, we may need you to raise your hand again if it's a yes.
Okay. At this time, Mrs. Dieroff, if it's a no, can you raise your hand? She's a no.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Again, I'm going to have to vote as an abstention because I cannot get into my iPad, or could not get into my iPad up until earlier this evening.
Mrs. McWherter?
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove?
Trying to, yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion passes seven one with one abstention.
Item number 12C is personnel recommendations. At this time, we like to present to the board one classified retirement, one resignation, recognize Dr. Kim, who was, had an opportunity to move to a larger district and thank her for her service as a chief human resource officer. The appointments of once supportive supervisory group member, two classified members, substitutes as listed. You have change of employment status for three professional, four supportive supervisory personnel, and six classified employees. We're also presenting for FMLA leave of absences, five professional staff, and uncompensated leave for three classified staff. We recommend the board of approval, approve the personal actions, recommend the board of school directors approve the personal actions as presented.
Okay, can you get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Hemingway, do we have a second?
I'll second that. McWherter.
McWherter, seconds. Any comments or questions on this personnel item? All right, seeing and hearing none, we'll move to a vote.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff? Ms. Dieroff, we may--
You raise your hand. It sounds like a no, Ms. Dieroff. Can you confirm or raise your hand if it's no? It's a no.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Again, I'll abstain for all the reasons I said before.
Mrs. McWherter?
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion passes seven one with one abstention.
That's the end of my report, Mr. President.
All right. So the next thing we have on tonight's agenda is old business.
No old business.
Moving along, we are now at public comment period number two. So if anybody dialed in from the public wishes to speak at this time, any topics related to the school district in general. We have 30 minutes allotted, three minutes per person. If you could raise your hand in the Zoom app, or if you're dialed in, make acknowledgement of your interest in speaking.
I see no hand raised, Mr. President.
All right, we will move along to board comment. Are there any board comments? Can I similarly ask that board members raise their hand and we'll try to go in order. So we have, it looks like Mr. Brophy and Ms. Dieroff, Ms. Hogan.
You also have Mr. Updugrove raising his hand visually.
Brandon put me in the queue.
All right, so here's, a lot of people want to go. We're going to go with, let me write these down real quick. We're going to go with Mr. Brophy, followed by Ms. Dieroff, Ms. Hogan, Ms. Denon, and Ms. Nyman.
Did you say Mr. Updugrove?
Okay, I guess--
Oh, sorry.
Personally, thank Mrs.--
Mr. Updugrove as well.
Okay, I'd like to thank Mrs. Pitts for continuing to look into the refinancing issue that she sent out some information today. It's great that anytime we can get some money saved, it's a good thing to do. So I could thank her for that. We didn't talk about lawn, the lawn care tonight, and the only question I have on that when I looked at it was, do we have an opt-out on that for unsatisfactory service? Sometime I can get an answer to that question would be great before we sign anything. And my final one is, we voted to move the overseas trip to later in the year. My only question on that is, now with the, all the travel bans, is there a possibility that the students can get all their money back? And would that option be, you know, be something that should be presented to them? I don't know the answer. I don't know if anybody can get it, but I thought maybe with the, with the, everything being completely shut down, that they might be able to get all their money back, even if they don't have the insurance.
Mr. Brophy, it was, it was not later in the year, this school year. The options were beyond later than this school year. It actually was 2020, 2021. I'm doing this from memory, but I know it was, didn't have, did not have to be done this year.
Yeah, but they were looking toward August for that, as the latest, because we have seniors involved in this. And there's like 27 seniors, and at some point, this might not work for them. And that's why I'm concerned that maybe if we can get them all their money back due to this, something that should be looked into and offered to them if possible. That's all I'm looking for on that.
Okay, and Dr. Foley is on, and I think he heard, and he, we can send out something in the weekly report.
That's great. Thank you very much. That's all.
If you want me to, I can give you a couple pieces of information on that.
Yeah, sure.
We did work with the company, and even at the money that they're getting back with the insurance, it's still more than they would have gotten from the insurance. And that's the, the person who's only getting everything back except for the $800. We did talk with them about that, especially with the travel bans and stuff like that. And they are going to increase the voucher possibility for students to use them all the way through 2022, December of 2022. Okay. So they could just get a full voucher back, which would give them their 100% of their money in that voucher. But if they choose to get the refund in cash, then it will still be less, either the $800 or the $600 based upon the monies that they paid in.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure there was some other, if we looked into it to see if there's something else we could get them. That's all.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Your mic is muted, Mr. President. Who's next?
Sorry. So just as a reminder for the folks that are, that did raise their hand, to go ahead and put them down because I've recorded them, and now I can add anyone who raises their hand afterwards. So next, we have Ms. Dieroff. Ms. Dieroff, it looks like you are on mute at the moment. If you don't mind, I'll move to Ms. Hogan, and Ms. Dieroff will keep you on the list if we're able to get you off mute then. Ms. Hogan, do you want to go right now?
I just wanted to thank the administration for working so hard. I know this is difficult times. I want to thank all of the employees who are leaving their homes and going into work, and everyone who's working from home. I know as a parent, I really appreciate everyone's effort. So that's really all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, and just check on, looks like Ms. Dieroff was able to come off mute, so we'll go to her next. I heard that, but it is, it's not, the sound is not coming through great, but if you want to try to get your comment out.
Okay, there's a couple I had. I wanted to know about the food items that we're in category. Did we give those to food? Or are we going to? And do we have to get, keep getting deliveries of food with the contract that we have? Hello?
Carol, could you process about food?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I heard the exact question, but I talked to some. We are feeding all of our students. We have a waiver that we feed any student 18 and under. And we have been doing that since Wednesday of last week every day. We will get reimbursed because of the waiver. And we are working on a plan for two weeks while we have the continuation of closing, where we will do multiple meals. Three meals on a Monday and two meals on a Thursday. That information will go out later this week. We are using a lot of the food. I think I heard some food questions in there that we have on stock. We were able to use that. I did talk to Mrs. Clinton briefly this afternoon, and she did say we're going to have additional delivery, I think it is of milk, on this Friday. So I do hope that answers your questions, Mrs. Dieroff.
Okay.
Just if I can, real quick.
The photocopy machine that we have on the plane ground, we've got an extension of time limit. And I was also calling, asking about the garbage. We're not going to have the pickups we usually have. We had a comp needs to know. And I think taxes for taxes, I don't think that money's going to come in like it had been, and also the school taxes. We're going to have problem with those also.
Carol, you're muted.
I am. I'm sorry. I couldn't hear all of the questions. I know I heard one about garbage, and I would say we do still have, our peddial staff is working at the building. So I would believe that we would have much less trash than we would normally have. But I don't think that we would have zero. Maybe that is something. I know that when Mr. Saltanik gave us a report line of the proposed legislation, that we have the ability through that legislation to renegotiate some contracts. I don't know if that would include our garbage contract. And I think I heard you ask about copy services as well. I do believe those are in a monthly lease. But I would have to check into the terms of that. And school taxes. As long as my, and I'm not sure if I could hear the exact question. As long as my staff has the ability to be identified as essential and to come in and process what they need to do, we should be able to process tax bills. We do process them at the Burke County Intermediate Unit. One of the other things, you'll notice that we had the updated census taker, and they are taking, they are bringing us reports. And my staff, that is one of the things that they are able to work on remotely, is making the changes from the census. So I hope I got most of those. Okay, I'm not sure I heard all of that, but I did hear you're concerned about the budget, and I will say-- I'm sorry, I, we were talking at the same time. Can you say that again, Mrs. Dieroff? I am sorry, I didn't get any of that, although I will address concerned about the budget, which I am as well. When I made the projections, the most recent projection that I made, I did bring back earned income quite a bit. And I know that we'll need to address in the 2021 budget as well. And I do believe earlier, Mrs. Dieroff said something about real estate transfer tax. I would agree, that's another area that we'll need to look at. I think to look at interest earnings in next year's budget as well. So I hope I got addressed most of those questions.
Yes, and I think, I think I heard-- Yes, and I think, I think I heard Ms. Duroff say that she would send an email, which I would suggest to anybody on the call, if you don't feel that your question was adequately answered or you don't, you weren't able to express it fully and clearly because of the technology issues that we're trying to cope with, certainly send an email in. We'll try to get answers to anything that wasn't addressed during this meeting. Next in the queue, I have, and again, if anyone wants to speak again, please just raise your hand in the participant pane, and I'll add you back to the list. So at this point, I'll move to Ms. Denon.
Thanks, Mr. Foose. I just wanted to thank Dr. Bedden for his, for his leadership and all of the administration for the hard work they're doing. This is something that no one has ever been through before. And I really appreciate the updates that we're getting from administration, especially the articles about what other states are doing and timely information about the things that are going on legislatively, both at the state level and the national level. It's been really very, very helpful. I can just go to my school board emails and, and go to that one, one place and get all the information. So I just really appreciate it. And I have been talking to a lot of other board members, some of them who I'm on the DCIU board with. And they are not getting as much information as we are getting. So I really appreciate everything that the administration is doing. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
All right. Next in the queue, I have Ms. Nyman.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, I can hear you, we can hear you.
You can hear me?
Yes.
First of all, I want to say this is the worst experience I've had. Can't understand anybody. I have not been able to get on, so I am hoping Dr. Bedden is gonna have somebody work with me to set it up properly, if this is what we are going to be doing. I am very, I don't know how to say it, angry. You had an executive session where I could not link in because I was not set up. So I have no idea what was said in that meeting. And I am a board member. And to have a meeting start at four o'clock when I am working till 3:30 is totally, totally wrong. I deserve to be included in those meetings. And I had to come home today and try to get my iPad set up, did not make it. And my iPad is still not set up right that I can be on. So I have no idea what went on in executive session. And here I am on my phone tonight, and I can't understand half of what is going on. It is very, very sad.
All right, thank you, Ms. Nyman. Do you have any other comments or questions at this time? All right, I believe next in the queue is Mr. Upda Grove.
Till the end, the lost or broken units brought back. Who's responsible for those? Did you hear me?
I think I heard, I think the second half of your question was heard, but not the first half.
Well, the lost or broken computers that are brought back, who is responsible for those? The students or the school?
This might be a question for Mr. Iannelli.
Is he still on?
That's right, I'm looking.
Well, he's not here, but what has happened, and I don't know, Mr. Stout is on. Is Mr. Stout still here?
Yeah, I'm on, I can speak to that. Typically, the, we do a self-insurance policy with our students as far as collection goes for the amount of, of cost it would be to insure the computer. So there's a purpose behind that. And then also, there is a potential bill that would go out to students if they do not self-insure, and they would get billed for that. The actual attempt to collect those funds is not always the easiest, but we do have some things in place.
Okay, that's what I was wanting. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I see, looks like Mr. Hemingway has his hand up, so we'll go to him next.
Yeah, I would just like to take a moment to say thank you to administration and also to some other board members who have helped me with some of the technical difficulties I've had this week. When I wasn't able to get on to certain devices, phone call worked, I got a call back right away. I appreciate that we had a test run earlier in the week to make sure that everybody was connected. And I just want to say thank you to everyone for providing, you know, all the information, keeping me in the loop, and answering all calls that I had when I reached out, when I needed assistance. And again, I just, you know, we're all in this together, and thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And I saw one other hand come up, Ms. McWharter.
Yeah, again, I just wanted to thank the, everyone, not just the administration, but parents, the students, the school board. This has been a very difficult time mentally, and probably physically for most everybody who is staying at home. Probably just a couple of things on today's meeting. Dr. Bedden, it might be good if you needed your microphone when you weren't speaking, because it seemed like there was some echoing, and I'm not sure if it was yours or somebody else's. And I appreciate everybody giving this technology a try to do this, so that we can stay safe. And wash your hands and stay healthy.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any, anyone else looking to get in the queue. So I'll just, I want to reiterate some of what's already been said, but obviously, situation's not ideal. It's much better when we can meet face to face, be in a room with one another. There are some clear disadvantages to this way of working, but I appreciate everybody's flexibility. We're trying to stay on top of communication the best that we can and be responsive. The district and the administration is dealing with a lot of issues that is consuming all their time. I mean, just pretty matter-of-factly, any hour of the day that I speak with a member of the administration to try to see how they're going, where they're at, there's a chance that they're in the middle of something. Because from five in the morning till 10, 11 at night, there are, there's information that they're getting from the federal government, the state government, local entities, that they're trying to evaluate, process, and determine what that means for us as a district, while also making the decisions about how best to educate as many students as, as we can in a fair and equitable way during these very unprecedented times. It's certainly a challenge, and as board members, I appreciate that we're being flexible and understanding in our approach to that. We'll try to get any kinks from this meeting worked out. We did fix a couple from the earlier meeting till now, and I'm sure that there will be more, and we will continue to try to smooth those out, smooth those out as we go forward. But I, I really do want to give kudos to the, not just the administration, but all district staff, teachers, and every, every aide, any, any person who's played a role in the lives of our students, because our students right now miss coming in and having that interaction. But I think that they also are getting a lot of good feedback from, from the school. And, and there's, there's a lot more to be figured out over the next few weeks. So thank you to everybody. That is all I have, the board comments. We have our upcoming meeting dates. The district calendar is, I want to say up to date, but please stay tuned, as with everything. This is all kind of in flux and fluid at the moment. So also thank you to everyone who dialed on tonight. Hopefully this one's okay for you. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Order motions.
Order motions, do I have a second?
Denon seconds.
Denon seconds. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.